Oh, with like the guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like the irony of all that.
Right, yeah. And do you watch like those like commentary part at the end?
No.
Okay, so they were talking about the like.
Yeah.
Part of it, like the show and how it's all for and then on.
Yeah, they did a good job of that.
Like. Like this was like the point of their return.
Yeah.
How she had become kind of think that she was already in Seattle.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, I know. I I did like to get a bit sure that that's what that's what they're trying to do. Yeah. Especially when she. I mean, they don't have more like a lot of guys, but he's not.
I don't know if it's true, but I heard that was the last um flash.
And um, have you seen material with?
No.
Oh my gosh.
Oh, yeah, I need to see that.
I did see it too. I'm really confused though.
She would not just direct that. I'm sorry.
Not.
She would not.
Like people love her. I think she's okay. I think she's gorgeous, stunning, I think. See, I'm I'm like, she's not on top of my list either.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And yeah, I don't think she deserves him.
Either of either of them.
And I don't like that.
How can we work something with?
Testing one two? Yeah, work for me.
Yeah, hopefully I don't see.
I started a video.
I started a video with that one.
Oh yeah.
Cheers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our July 9th Planning Commission meeting. Okay, I called this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call, roll?
Commissioner Knighton?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Vice Chair Holler?
Here.
Chair Madrid?
Here.
Kess, it looks like you might want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd be happy to. Everybody please stand if you're able.
Thank you.
Put your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your salute, sir.
Thank you, Kess.
Okay, so there are no presentations. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Can I ask the Planning Commission for an all-in-favor to approve the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
I do have two requests to speak. First, I have Felix Gonzalez, followed by Bernard Truex.
Okay, so this is the time for members of the public to address the commission about items which are not listed on the agenda. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the commission's ability to respond to your comments. Or non-agendaid matters at this time such comments are made. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes on any single item. Thank you, sir.
My name is Felix Gonzalez. I'm referring to the north part of Valley Boulevard just past McCall. Engineers came through, put a pipeline in there, widened the roads, cut a beautiful two-to-one slope on it as required by the state of California. And people in Menifee are used to dirt roads, so they drove through there until the city closed it off. Once the city closed it off, they made it a perfect hideaway for people to start throwing trash and dumping there. And now it's getting out that you could come to Menifee and dump your trash for free. So I'm asking the city what my father said to me. You made the mess, you clean it up. You could put $100 stop sign on the corner of McCall and Open Valley Boulevard. It's gonna have to be opened eventually. You got 1,500 houses coming up at the end of Cherry Hill. You got a school coming up on the corner there. I was an operating engineer. I retired after 35 years. I built the I-15. I worked on the 6215. I worked on plenty of highways, subways, so on and so forth, you know? Even the Elmwood corridor in Long Beach. And I noticed when they close off a road, people take advantage and start dumping trash there. Now, if you could, I'd like you folks to take a look at it and, you know, evaluate the situation. If it was up to me, I'd put a stop sign at the end of McCall and Open Valley Boulevard. People in Menifee are used to driving on dirt roads. There's thousands of dirt roads out here in Menifee. They're not afraid of them. Okay, anyways, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Bernard Truex?
Good evening, commissioners, staff, public. My name is Bernard L. Truex, and I am a developer in a real estate company here in the valley and have been for forty-some years.
Mr. Truex, if I can interrupt real quick. I believe your comment, it's related to the discussion item we have today, is that correct?
Actually, it is about your Menifee Innovation District and generally the future of Menifee and the great job you guys are already doing that we hope continues. So I see that I got the chance to talk before I got to see in detail what you had in our talking about the district, but I wanted to let you know who we are and our interest in Menifee. I've already acquired 32 acres on Han Road at the intersection of Han and Holland. I've made offers on two other pieces that are north of that that would take the land contiguous down to Lowe's Theater. We've been in some discussions with Orlando and staff on planning and ideas for that, but our interest is much greater than just that piece. We also have taken a look and have made offers and are talking to landowners all the way down Han to where your Innovation District is, which I believe is a great idea and a great side of that. We see, my company and my investors see Menifee as the last good opportunity to finish the valley, which has been growing for the last 30, 40 years. My company's been involved in Temecula, in Old Town, in Marietta, projects along the freeway. I've built projects in Lake Elsinore. We are now starting to look at Menifee, and we believe that the future of Menifee is in your hands. You got the opportunity now to finish it correctly because it got a great start. You got the homes, you got the roads, you got the interstate. Now you gotta finish with something special, and the Innovation District could be that. And some of the ideas that we're sharing with Orlando about an opportunity to bring the performing arts, a downtown area, started from scratch, and other developments that we've got on plan. So I wanted to compliment you on the work to date, tell you we see the city as a great place and we want to be a part of it. That's it. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Truex.
Chair, I have no other requests to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is one set of minutes for the Planning Commission's approval. Does the Planning Commission have any modifications?
No.
Okay. Chris? Nothing? Okay. Could I ask the Planning Commission for an all-in-favor to approve the June 11th, 2025 minutes?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. There are no consent calendar items, there are no public hearing items, which brings us to the main event. Item 10.1, the Menifee Innovation District Specific Plan Workshop. Could the Community Development Director please introduce this matter? Not acting, but Director.
Chair Madrid, thank you. The item, as you know, we attempted to provide a presentation over a month ago, and that was a really long, long meeting, so we didn't have adequate time to have a discussion. So we're back, and we did invite our consultant that is helping us through this process. His name is Jeff Hosea with Rick Engineering. He'll be doing the presentation today. But just to let you know, obviously, we're probably halfway done to the process. We started about a year ago. We still have probably another year to go. And just for the commission's information, today you're not taking any action in terms of approving anything. This is just a recommendation between commission and council to hopefully give us the green light to continue and actually develop the specific plan if the commission and council are in support of the proposed land use plan. So this is a big milestone that would take us to the finish line. So with that, I do want to invite Jeff to give us a presentation if IT can help us out.
Awesome. Good evening. Thank you, Orlando, and good evening, Chair Madrid and the rest of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Couple of good intros from the audience as well, so that's great. You know, so my name's Jeff Hosea. I'm the Director of Design with Rick Engineering, and I lead part of our planning and urban design team. So I'll walk through about a 20-minute presentation here and then highlighting some of the Innovation District and then have lots of time for follow-up and discussion. Okay. Work two machines here. So the city of Menifee, as has been stated already, is really positioned to become a model for purposeful growth and regional economic development. Among many exciting projects citywide, none better represents that vision than the Menifee Innovation District. So we know Menifee is one of California's fastest-growing cities, and it's shaped its identity through strategic planning, targeted investments, and a commitment to livability. The district not only is envisioned as a major southern gateway into the city, but it's the foundation of Menifee's long-term economic strategy. So I'd like to play a video that the city staff put together about the Innovation District.
To establish something special, something truly different, takes time and a lot of planning and collaboration. We all play a vital role in its development.
The Menifee Innovation District will be the first of its kind in Riverside County. Located in the Menifee Valley, the city seeks to leverage its central location between two major metropolitan areas to attract new business and investment. The Menifee Innovation District will be a vibrant innovation hub that attracts high-tech businesses and features mixed-use options. The district will create a dynamic environment that creates high-paying jobs and includes a range of entrepreneurial opportunities with incubator spaces, executive suites, and research and development labs.
The Menifee Innovation District will create the framework to create new businesses from biotech corporations, medical providers, manufacturers, and research establishments and financial institutions. The district will be walkable with ample landscaping and green belts that connect all of the uses.
The Innovation District will be a vibrant job center that continues to have life after typical work hours, allowing innovation through culinary arts and entertainment.
Residents will have a variety of housing choices, including apartment living to town homes to mixed-use development, where people can live upstairs and go downstairs to eat, shop, and run errands.
Walkability will be paramount in the design with easy access to jobs, groceries, and entertainment close by. For all other uses, an enhanced public transit network will link the cores of Menifee with the greater region. The creation of the Menifee Innovation District will be a step towards the future, a new, better, and best future for generations to come.
Pretty good. So if we could go back to the slides. There we go. And I'll go one back. So I want to thank staff for putting that together. It's a great video, and as you can see, the Innovation District is more than just a land plan. It's really a bold step, and this is a bold step for Menifee's future. It's a bold step towards addressing really four key issues. Attracting high-wage industries, reducing the outbound commute, reducing job leakage that goes to San Diego and Orange County companies today, and then growing Menifee's tax base. It's as much an economic development plan as it is a land use plan. And so with proximity to the city's expanding medical services corridor, Loma Linda and the rest up and down the corridor there, this district is really positioned to become a living lab where private sector, academic partners, and entrepreneurs can collaborate in real time. As Orlando said, we're about halfway through the process in general. Over the past year, we've led a collaborative planning process informed by your input, city council guidance, staff expertise, and a lot of community participation. Tonight, we'll share more about the Preferred Land Use Plan, and that is the basis then of our specific plan as we write the policies moving forward. Over the next several months, we'll craft those policies and strategies with your input and working in partnership with the staff, and then come back to you in the future with a specific plan, the EIR, and so forth for your further review. So from our very first public workshop a year ago, a few themes have guided our work pretty consistently. Creating a distinct identity, focus on tech and research, support a diverse resilient local economy, and promote a vibrant mixed-use environment. This is a quick reminder of the vision statement that was adopted last December in a joint Planning Commission-City Council workshop. I don't need to read it word for word, but this has been our North Star as we continue to think about the design of the district. Earlier this spring, we conducted a hands-on design charrette where we discussed land use frameworks and heard several of the challenges developers are facing in Menifee and Riverside County in general. A second public workshop at the end of March, we introduced three development scenarios. Each of those scenarios then had different amounts of land uses from employment to residential, all with the hopes of creating a 24/7 community. We discussed those potentials and the build-out scenarios and got great feedback from the audience. We introduced virtual reality into the mix too, so observers and participants could have this immersive environment provided to get a sense of the scale of the district. And it's from those conversations that we've now created the Preferred Land Use Plan that we'll talk about tonight. So I'm sure you all know where it is. Obviously, from the video, you just saw it as well. Highlighted here in orange, it's 375 acres, and it is the southern gateway into Menifee along 215. Obviously, to the south and the east is the city of Marietta, and to the west and north is Menifee. The Innovation District is a mile long, north to south, so it's a big piece of property, stretching from Keller Road at the south to Scott 215 intersection at the northeast corner, and then Howard Road and Nancy Lane make up the western boundary. While there was no single favored scenario from workshop number two, three key ideas really have come to the forefront that we'll go over here really quickly. First, three large innovation and tech corporate campuses were to be part of the plan, supported by maker spaces and higher-density residential. We heard strong support for the need to include spaces to support the future of healthcare, startups, and corporate offices that create the job growth that Menifee is looking for. Second, there was strong support for creating a walkable core with hotels, restaurants, and a food hall. The prioritization of pedestrian connectivity, bike lanes, and access to public transit were also important. And then third, the parks and open space system used for recreation, stormwater, and connectivity were all critical for almost everyone in the workshop. We heard about the importance of implementing greenways, pocket parks, and multi-use trails throughout the plan. So our preferred plan incorporates those ideas while also addressing core city needs laid out in the general plan as key economic development goals. Again, it's a kind of a repetitive message, but it's increasing the number of above-paying jobs, ensure a range of employment opportunities, improve the quality of life, and expand the diversity of the local tax base. All of this combines to create what the plan is all about. Our consensus concept is also driven by four foundational principles. Employment is priority number one. Menifee's agricultural identity can persist where appropriate, acknowledging there's already an evolution of uses happening in the area. Open spaces drive mobility and ecological health and connecting the experiences across the district, and then introducing housing diversity that complements rather than competes with the existing neighborhoods of Menifee. So let's step back and look at the big picture again. Here's our Innovation District. The area lies within the city's economic development corridor. It's the It's the southern gateway to the city. And quoting from that corridor plan, "The economic development corridor designation is intended to provide economic vitality and flexibility in land use options to promote economic development along the city's major corridors, namely I-215. It is intended that the majority of the city's new development will be located in these areas to promote infill and preserve the rural areas that are integral part of Menifee's community character." So here's our preferred plan as it's laid out today. This is what we're here to get a recommendation on, is really the land uses that we're talking about. So roughly, we've got about 4 million square feet of R&amp;D, Class A office, and innovation space. Just for reference, the city currently has about 376,000 square feet of total office space. We've got 3,100 new residential units. These are for sale, for rent, apartments, condos, townhomes, or row homes. Really no single-family homes like you see throughout the rest of Menifee. And then we've got neighborhood-serving retail and restaurants with visitor and employment-serving hotels and conference spaces. At full build-out, which could be 20 to 25 years or more, this district could support about 8,000 jobs and about 8,000 residents. So we'll highlight the three Class A employment campuses first, starting with the northeast Innovation Campus there. So this northeast campus is about 1.2 million square feet, sits along I-215 for maximum visibility. The design standards can be written to allow anywhere from four to 10-story buildings or more if we decide to make it more, but that number will then be set and determined by demand developers and the market as they see fit. So it's adjacent to existing retail, and then we would look to add more retail and a hotel within walking distance. This 12 acres right here could be the catalyst for the rest of the district. So as we look at the central campus in the middle, that's about 650,000 square feet, and then the southeast campus is another million square feet embedded in the habitat corridor there. So these campuses reflect proven precedents from San Diego, Silicon Valley, and other innovation districts around the country. It's their flexibility, visibility, and adjacency to amenities that are really desirable for anchor employers. Sorry, I was going backwards, wasn't I? There we go. Supporting the innovation ecosystem are smaller offices, too. It's not just all the corporate campuses. True innovation districts thrive not just on the anchors, but on an entire ecosystem. These include startups, incubators, lab spaces, maker spaces, and coworking hubs. Smaller startups are usually found in buildings like these, where they share spaces and share amenities, and it's simply more affordable for them. Want to touch on a case study from UCSD North Torrey Pines. This is the Living and Learning Neighborhood. This is an award-winning innovation district that was added to UCSD not too long ago, and it's become an economic research force in the region. There's an annual economic impact of about $16.5 billion a year. So this seven-building, 1.6 million square feet of office and research space occupies roughly the same acreage as our northeast campus that I just highlighted a minute ago. The North Torrey Pines neighborhood is highly walkable, just three city blocks wide, and successful because of its compact form. Within the district, residential buildings provide needed and diverse housing options, all organized around indoor and outdoor common areas that foster the social interaction and collaboration that innovation districts are shooting for. The third tier of employment opportunity that we're including in the Innovation District is neighborhood retail. It's the intention of the specific plan to create spaces for locally-owned businesses and restaurants throughout the entire district. So why is all this needed here? What is the real punchline? It's because Menifee is already home to the workforce. It lacks the office and above-average-paying jobs, though. Over 40,000 residents leave the city daily to work in San Diego, Orange County, or the Inland Empire. That's a massive leakage of talent and tax revenue that's simply not economically viable for the future of Menifee. In addition to the need for employment, one of the most consistent public comments we've heard so far throughout our workshops is the need for more housing variety throughout the city. So in the Innovation District here, we've included walkable amenity-rich residential types such that are suitable for young professionals, retirees, and employees who simply want to work close to where they work. We know retail and housing together enable great placemaking, and a vibrant mix of that locally-owned restaurants, markets, and third spaces will strengthen the district's character. And then the last element here is our open space system. It's equally essential to the overall plan. North to south and east to west greenways create a connected public realm. Stormwater infrastructure doubles as habitat and recreation space. Pocket parks, trails, and plazas bring the daily life outdoors. Nearly a third of our district is devoted to parks and open space, and that's accomplished by creating the higher-density pockets of development and the height that we did in those more compact areas. And so to manage such a large district and diverse area, we're dividing the Innovation District into four sub-districts. Each will come with tailored development standards and land uses, defined FARs, heights, densities, and open space ratios, and design guidance that promotes consistency yet long-term flexibility. So this is how we keep the residential where we want to keep the residential, we keep the employment where we want to keep the employment, and we allow the mix of uses to flow between the two. And like I said earlier, this is a phased development strategy, probably over the next 20 to 25 to potentially 40 years to build this district out. So this is a long-term, bold step for the city. And I wanted to close with an anecdotal case study as well. So this is the main park at an innovation district called the 195 District in Providence, Rhode Island. The district currently has about 14 projects with 2.1 million square feet of development, and about $830 million of investment have been put in by the private sector so far. The unique thing about this district is they didn't actually start with the building projects. They came out with the motto of "Lead with space, not steel." And so what they did through a series of public funding, grants, public art, and programming is they created this great park, and the incubator spaces within the park have now become permanent residents within the rest of the district and permanent jobs and everything within the rest of the district. So I stumbled upon this park a couple summers ago while I was traveling through the East Coast, because there was an art festival happening. And as I got there, and I'm looking around, I'm like, "This is an amazing place." And so I did a little research to figure out where I was and found out that it's an Innovation District in itself. So, like I said, the specific plan is much more than a land use plan. It's really a tool that's going to help shape Menifee's economic future while preserving the values that really make the city unique. So with that, I want to open it up for questions, comments, everything in between.
Jeff, good job. What's a row house?
A row house? Similar to a townhome, where they're mostly vertical, two to three stories, skinny, so you can put groups of six to eight together.
At one square foot?
A square foot. It can be anywhere from 1,200 to 1,800 generally.
And that's for rent, or?
Generally, those are for sale. Row homes are generally for sale.
How many homes in Innovation District are going to be for sale?
We haven't determined that yet. So really...
Like a ratio?
I would shoot for about half. I'm not sure, to be honest with you. That's going to take a little bit more of an economic study to figure that out, but my gut tells me about half, because you want to attract people that can rent as well, but you also want to attract a stable population that make the community their own.
Room for change.
Yeah, for sure.
To tag on to that, as far as the rental market goes on the multifamily, would you be...is it in the plan to have a lower, mid, or higher-income apartment?
I believe...
If you have different amenities, I mean, you can go get a super-expensive apartment in downtown L.A. that, you know, five grand a month, four grand a month. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Or you can get the subsidized, or maybe eight grand a month. I don't know. There's some really big projects. I haven't rented an apartment well, but I know there's some luxury apartments, you know?
Right.
And then there's mid-range, and then there's subsidized or lower income. What fits in this model?
Within most innovation districts, you find the full gamut of housing, and that's part of the idea of bringing a lot of people together from diverse backgrounds, because you want people to live there and work there. That's the goal. We know that really 10% probably will both live and work there. It's generally a pretty low number. It's lower than anybody would hope for, but once it gets going, that number starts to go up over time. But with that, you have all types of employment that are needed in the district, and so you want people that are renting lower income and renting higher income as well.
And did you have any more questions, Randy? I jumped in.
Yeah, no, you're good. I was just curious. So on the...what is the higher level? Is it...what's the max on the high-rise?
A max on the high-rise?
Well, what's the idea on the...
Height, height-wise?
Yeah, height. No, not height, not a number, like two, four-story, six-story?
Yeah. So what we've designed is, I've laid out, most of the housing tends to be in that two-to-three story, the townhomes and the row homes. The apartments are four, six, and 10 stories in a couple occasions. Some of the office is also between four and 10 stories. So as you develop, four stories and six stories is a pretty sweet spot for most developers. After that, the codes change architecturally and the structure changes to be much more expensive, so you got to get to 10 to make it worth their while to develop.
So I didn't notice that any parking structures is there. Is that what...you can have parking structures, obviously?
Yeah, so I've got a space for a couple parking structures today, and those are placeholders. We don't, we haven't figured all that out to that level of detail, but it is something the staff and I have talked about as potentially a city investment, to put that in first and then recoup that cost and really set the tone for the district, because you do want to really limit the amount of surface parking, because that's, again, how you get all that open space.
Okay, Ivan, you must have a question.
I have a question.
All right, go for it.
Ivan? Can I interrupt one second?
Sure.
Since we're talking about height?
Sure.
You mentioned height a few minutes ago. Workshop number one, two comments, were to limit the height at 50 feet. At the joint workshop in December, Carwin specifically said, "We do not want 10, 12-story buildings in this area." Workshop number two, after he said that in March, all of a sudden, we got 10, 11, 12-story buildings. Where did that come from? Which one of these council members, planning commissioners, who said, "Hey, let's go to 12 stories"?
I believe the idea of going four to 10 stories probably came from a conversation of us and staff and the development community, because, again, you need to go from six to 10. And I think, and Doug can correct me on this if I'm wrong, I think 75 feet is what...
75 is the max right now.
...the EDC allows, right? So that gets you about five to maybe six if you don't do it very well, right? If you have a low ceiling, floor-to-ceiling height.
I'm just wondering where, because there's no explanation at all about how...two comments said 50 feet max, actually lowering the EDC's height restriction, to Carwin saying, "We don't want 10 and 12-story buildings," to now we're looking at 10, 11, 12-story buildings. I just...
Yeah, understood.
Where that came from?
Understood. I don't recall exactly where that came from, so I apologize for that. I don't know why you would lower the height to 50 feet, because then, really, the effect of that is spreading everything out in three-story buildings, and you lose all of the effects of the open space and the walkability that could be created in an Innovation District.
The general consensus from the people that I spoke with at workshop number one was that 50-foot, we'd get some leeway, would be a maximum of a four-story hotel. There was no discussion at all about going vertical, more than that. So that's why people came up with the 50 feet.
Okay.
So in comment to that, I can't say I'm thrilled about a 10-story, but how many stories is the Loma Linda Hospital?
I think it's about eight, as I saw it as I drove by.
Okay, so would you be comfortable with the Loma Linda Hospital building being right in that corner there?
I don't think it's quite that high.
How many stories is...
About six. Because when I was looking, when I was looking at that, the height restriction there, I was looking at Loma Linda also. In fact, I think I asked someone from staff if, but they were unaware, because that's the city of Marietta. And just visually, I'm thinking it's maybe 75 feet tall, but I can't answer that.
That's okay, that's okay. I appreciate the opportunity. So first of all, I want to say, I like the plan conceptually. That is, I certainly understand the desire to incorporate office space or lab-type space and incubators, and I get the whole concept with how an incubator feeds into some of the other desired R&amp;D uses or office uses. I understand even a residential component. I get the relationship there as well as the retail shops and restaurants. So conceptually, I get that. I have a number of concerns. You've heard my concerns in a previous conversation. So I just will start out like this. You had at the beginning of the presentation said, "Hey, we've got about 4 million square feet of commercial and R&amp;D space."
Correct.
Any kind of reasonable absorption rate on that, this is, we're kicking this out a lot longer than a 40-year plan. Let's assume that Menifee could absorb 100,000 square feet a year in Class A office space every year for the next 40 years is what that supply would equal. And there's no way we'd hit 100,000 square feet of absorption rate every year for the next 40 years. Today, and I realize this is today, we're not, I'm not talking long-term, I'm not sure who's building Class A office space. That's not to say that there's not a need for it. My concern is when you go that far out with the supply, it impacts costs related to infrastructure or associated infrastructure from a CIP standpoint. You got to build roads, water, sewer, and all the other infrastructure necessary to serve that. Speaking of a 10-story building, I would...my professional opinion is, you don't have enough firefighters on duty at any particular point in time in Menifee, or in Menifee and Marietta, or in Menifee-Marietta, an adjacent jurisdiction, to fight a 10-story high-rise fire. So there's demand for services that I think is unanswered. So while, conceptually, I get it, it seems very large numbers, and I'm not sure those numbers are realistic, and that impacts the city from an infrastructure cost standpoint, but also it becomes a land bank. And so it sits there, potentially undeveloped, until you touch time as demand occurs over who knows how many decades. So that's a concern I have. I'm not against the concept. It's a concern I have. The other thing, so it's absorption rate. The other comment is, I'm very familiar with the Torrey Pines Business Park and the campus and its proximity to UCSD. There's a key, proximity to UCSD. No, UCSD. Torrey Pines UCSD. USD is on the hill over in the other side. UCSD, yeah. Is that what I said? I said UCSD.
No, UCSD.
That's what I said.
Yeah, I know.
Oh. Okay. UCSD, its proximity to UCSD, I think, is key, right? So you've got a university with, you know, teaching hospital, research hospital associated with it, you've got adjacent biotech, medical, R&amp;D development. That's a great mix. We don't have that here, and if I'm the CEO of a biotech company, I'm guessing I might say, "I think I want to live in La Jolla." And so how do you get those companies here? How do you attract them? Maybe as a satellite campus, and that might work. I realize that because of the, some of their workforce is probably located here, but you had said this is as much an economic development plan as anything else, and I think that's very true. I think that needs to be explored. I think that needs to be explored a lot more, because even though we might want a lot of R&amp;D or tech, it, zone it and they will come, doesn't work. I've seen that over and over again. Maybe to a small extent, but you, you don't zone it and folks show up because you've got the zoning. So I have some concerns in that regard with the height, with the absorption rate. I, I know you can, when, when this goes to build out, developers are gonna wanna build the residential product first. You can certainly limit that to a certain extent with phasing, but if you tie too many of those hands, then even the residential product doesn't become attractive to developers because they might go somewhere else. So I, I think, I think there's, there's a lot of concerns with the scale and implementation that I'm not comfortable with, because I don't think it's appropriate to land bank stuff for, for, you know, 40 years. That, that's beyond the horizon of the general plan in the city of Menifee. So I, I think I would share my colleague's concern with respect to the, to the height of the, of the buildings. I think it's also the scale of the project overall. And, and I'll conclude with this, so I don't monopolize the entire discussion. I, I, I think I'd said earlier, if you can bring in sit-down restaurants, I, I will love you forever. Very hard to get sit-down restaurants. There's a number of dynamics in California that are playing, you know, the cost of labor, all of that stuff. I won't get into that. But, but I know you want restaurants. I, I would love to see restaurants here, but I, I'm not sure, I've heard really anything about how we intend to get those first-in development costs for a restaurant, first-in. Very expensive.
Agreed.
Not a lot of restaurants can, can handle that. And then, lastly, I lied, I had one more. Lastly?
Keep going.
No, no. My, my, my other concern is, we, we have a, a town center, albeit not like this, but certainly Newport and, and Hawn and all of the commercial retail development that's around here, Courthouse, City Hall development across the way, the amphitheater, all of that stuff is starting to come together. My concern is, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal, I think, a, a word that one of my other colleagues would use, I, I would be concerned about cannibalizing this for that. So those are my concerns, because I don't wanna be entirely negative. I wanna come back to what I, I, I think the concept is good. I, I like the concept, I appreciate it. I think you've got the right ideas going there. For me, it's a scale issue. Thank you.
I'll tag, tag on to what you're saying. Based on your experience, you know, in Marietta and the other places you've been, what do you see would be a scale or maybe a different theme there that would work, just from your experience?
So I, I think you have to look at absorption rate for the different uses and also engage economic development folks to start saying, "Hey, what's realistic? What can we really attract?" And I do think we can attract some of those uses. I, I do. I just don't think we're gonna attract as many as are in the plan and in, in an adjacent jurisdiction that I have some knowledge of. There was a land use designation for a while called ORP? ORP? Yeah, Office Research Park.
Is that the Golden Triangle?
Uh, no, but it was, it was south. It, it was a colossal failure. Developers didn't understand it, people didn't come and build, so it sat vacant for years and it prevented other uses because of the mix. I think we have to be really careful with that. I get the innovation.
What did it ultimately become? I don't know which.
Ultimately, it became partially innovation, which is a very similar mix to what we have today, and, and there's still challenges with, with that. So it, it's great ideas, it just, we just need to be careful with how we approach it. So I don't, I don't wanna be overly negative. I just want everyone to hear my concerns. You can dismiss them if you like, I'm just a guy, but.
Well, to tag on what you're saying, what comes to mind is, on the 15, you know where Boot Barn is along there? Boot Barn in Marietta and the BMW, the Boot Barns, there used to be, there was a FedEx and a lot of that's just stayed vacant for years. And then they put up the, I think it's two to four-story buildings and you've, now you've got some university extensions in there, I think there's three universities in there. You've got a Kaiser over there, a satellite office. You've got some light manufacturing and some retail. That is kinda how I see this should go, maybe on a bigger scale, but that organically evolved because of the need.
And, and I don't disagree, but I, I don't, so you have, you have R&amp;D, I didn't really hear a conversation about light manufacturing, you know, if you had tech, all indoors. I, I heard more Class A office, maybe lab space. The video showed, you know, folks in a lab coat with test tubes and stuff, so.
I think it's a mixture of both.
Yeah, I know, I know. So I, I think it's possible. I, I guess if I were to wrap this up, so that Tammy doesn't get mad at me for taking all the time. If I were to wrap this up, I would say, "I just wanna make sure we get the mix right." I'm not sure that's the case yet.
Ivan, in the city of Marietta, there is an innovation district. How long has that been in place?
Uh, the zoning was changed a few years ago, yeah, maybe five years, something like that.
And in that time, you have one urgent care, a bus yard, and a closed-down gene channel cats fishing hole.
It's, it's not quite that drastic, but you're not far off.
But what's, what's been?
But now you have the Costco, it's in between the Costco and Loma Linda.
The Costco is below. Costco is just commercial zoning. It's not in the innovation district.
Costco was different.
But what was the hurdle in the city of Marietta to get that innovation district built? To come in there and someone buy that bus property? To buy the properties along that road off of down the White Wood?
You're, you're a little bit outside of my area of expertise, but, but here's what I understand. When, when you're a, if you're developing residential, there, there can be a substantial amount of money in residential development. When you, when you develop it as an innovation area, that's a little bit harder to, to find, and so you can't pay the same premium necessarily that you can pay for, for residential land. You're a little bit outside of my area of expertise, so I don't wanna go too far down that, that road, but that's, I think that's, that's a problem, is, you know, the owner says, "Hey, we think our land is worth this," but when you, when you load in all the development costs, the residual value is actually much less than almost everybody thinks it is. Those are not issues that specific plans deal with, but it is a real-world issue. Thank you, Ivan.
Ivan, you're gonna be speaking a lot tonight, okay? Because I have, because when you mentioned phasing in, right, primarily with the economic portion of the R&amp;D, the office buildings, and then you said we have to make sure we don't tie our hands. Can you speak more to that? Because I know that some cities have successfully implemented phasing, so tell me, tell me more about that, please.
I think we could implement phasing, but I'm, I'm actually gonna ask you if you could address that.
I was gonna ask if you wanted to trade places, Ivan. Yeah. Sorry, could you repeat the question?
So Commissioner Haller mentioned phasing, and that has, that has been one of my thoughts as I was reading through the innovation district. And, but he, but Commissioner Haller also mentioned, "We don't wanna tie our hands too much." So what would be a good balance to phase and tie to high-wage jobs?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, and it's a tricky question. And like Commissioner Haller, it's a little not exactly in my wheelhouse. I design physical places as much as I do anything else. But like I said, this is a big, bold step. There is no doubt about that. And I, I mean, we were given the task of writing an innovation district-specific plan across 375 acres, that today has some warehouse, some logistics spaces, and some existing farms. So we took a big, bold step when we put this forward. There is no doubt about that. It is an economic challenge as much as it is an economic plan. And I have said that as forthright as I could to staff, that this is, this is on staff now to go out and sell this project and bring those people in. I think as far as the phasing goes, that northeast campus is the natural place for me to call a Phase 1, because you've got the existing retail at Scott Road right there and building on that, plus the retail advisors have told us that those parcels along the highway are probably ready to be sold. And so some of the other pieces of the district, nobody has mentioned wanting to sell any of those. So we're creating a plan, looking out into the future across, you know, and making presumptions, basically. But those particular properties and parcels are probably likely to, ready to be sold, would be high-visibility, attached to amenities or within distance to amenities. And it's all the things that a good office developer is looking for to begin with. So that, that would be my first phase. And if we, if we were given the task of writing an innovation district for the north 35 acres of this place, I think some of that would actually remain the same, to be honest with you. So, in, in my opinion.
As the, as the developers that you spoke to or the real estate people said, it's likely to be sold first, but have they talked about the demand for office space though there? It'll be sold, it's the most attractive, it's the, it's the most attractive, because it's right along the freeway, a lot of visual there.
Right.
But what did they say if it was built? Like Truax, I, I was on the posse for the Semecula for 15 years, and we used to ride around and see the Truax buildings down there. Is something like those, or even higher, obviously, would they be leased out fairly quickly? Or is there a demand for that right now? What would, did they mention anything like that?
Yeah, no, we didn't, we haven't gotten into demand. That's, that's another phase, another step in our process to get to, when, as we write these policies. I think, I think the demand could be there, and from what we heard from the development community at the design workshop, or the design charat, was that the city needs to step up with some policies and tools to allow that, those developers to come in, and then it would be there, because they know the workforce is here already. They know the residential is already here. So the, a, a lot of the pieces are already in play in the city. It's, you're lacking the office space. And I think you're lacking the office space, humble opinion, partially from an economic development point of view, going out and finding those people to bring in, and partially from a, a big, bold policy and a big, bold plan that says, "We're ready for business, come in and, and, you know, we, we want you here." And I think, I think some of that has to be a little bit more vocal.
You know, look, looking at the picture, it looks great, but I see how many, you say 40 years, and.
That's at 100,000 square feet a year.
But that's what I'm thinking it's gonna take, anyway. And so you, let's say, is it always gonna be an area under construction for all that time? We're gonna be, we're gonna be working on infrastructure, and to keep, we're gonna work on road widening and curb and gutter and traffic signals, just, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a sore there for a long time.
I, I hear you. So our innovation, our district is 375 acres, and if I read the report correctly, there's 2,600 acres in the economic development corridor that the city has set aside as economic development for the future growth and future development of Menifee. So we are a tiny little blip in that, 2,600 acres along, along I-215. Yeah, I'm.
Well, I know we're only doing the concept right now, and I, I love the comments that the commissioners are making, and we just gotta get this right before the.
Agreed.
Specific plan is, 'cause who could, could it hold up, builders? The specific plan? Or are they waiting for it to get started?
Sorry, say that again.
So, so in other words, is the specific plan gonna slow things down, gonna slow building down if this concept doesn't catch on?
Will it be a hindrance rather than a carrot?
Well, no, because we would write things to allow a pretty wide variety of uses. We've heard from the public and staff and others that more logistics, more warehousing spaces is probably not what's desired in that corridor. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I'm seeing some heads shaking. So, you know, I think that's what you're gonna get if you don't have some vision put forward. You're gonna get more of that low end, and, and those are nice warehousing spaces. I mean, there's no doubt about it. They, they went above and beyond what a lot of people do, but that's what you're gonna get more of up and down Zider's Road and Hawn and, and the rest of it, along 215, and the storage units that are further north and so on and so forth, because it's easy to develop.
So.
But, yeah.
Go ahead, if you're done, when you're done, Randy.
I'm done.
So in our meeting yesterday, we, we had different meetings, but the big question I had was, what is the carrot that will motivate a developer to come in and build, whether it's office space or tech or whatever it is, over, for example, there's the space between Scott Road and Lowe's? There's all that space. Why would they wanna build in this innovation district over that which is closer to the city center? Usually things, you know, geographically kinda go against, next to each other, development pushes out. So what is the carrot of this innovation district that would motivate them?
I, I think it's, I think it's part of it, at least, and, you know, I'll, I'll look to staff to help me out on this a little bit, who knows the city better than I do. But I think part of it is being part of a bigger vision to where you want to be, you want your office space next to walkable amenities and residential and the rest of it. That is, there are certain people out there looking to develop in those types of areas. If I'm not worried about that and I just want the, the least expensive land and plop an office building down and, and a sea of asphalt parking around it, that, again, that's easy to do, and that's what, that's what is easier to do further north, probably, because it doesn't have, it wouldn't have the, the same specific plan behind it, pushing for that bigger vision and the open space and, and the rest of it.
You know, if I could, if I could add on to that? I think one of the things is just generally, it needs to be cheaper to build inside the box than outside the box, right? So that's the incentives that have to come along with a plan like this. And, and you've got a couple of financing mechanisms that are mentioned in the agenda report. I don't know if you or someone else wanna talk about EIFDs? I don't know if the city's done one, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't think so. That's, that's one option. But the other are incentives, right? So service parking is expensive and burns up a lot of land. Structure parking is crazy expensive, burns up less land. You know, that might be something that, from an infrastructure contribution standpoint, that, and you alluded to this, I think, Mr. Director, you alluded to this earlier. So I think those options, those are other options, and that, that kind of follows along with the implementation. I mean, I, it's kinda easy to get excited about the pretty pictures and the video of somebody in a lab coat. But having seen that before, I, I think we need to develop the rest of the, the package so that we understand how the implementation is gonna go, so that we understand the project phasing, so that we understand the absorption rate. How high is it, you know, do we really have to build? If you're talking 10 stories, are you moving into a podium construction? I mean, wraparound, I don't, I don't have any idea. That's not my area of expertise. But all of those questions, I think, including being able to serve it, are important to at least touch on now.
And just for facts, I looked up, Loma Linda Hospital's five stories. So touching on the EIFD stuff, I know, 'cause we, we do dis, I form districts for a living, those EIFDs can take 10 to 20 years to actually be able to bond and, and get any money out of it. So I know one of the carrots is having a pre, a, a done EIR for the whole, the investment district, so therefore someone coming in doesn't have that cost and that time delay. So that's one carrot. Orlando, are there any other carrots as far as installing infrastructure?
Let me ask, let me ask, do we wanna continue to ask Jeff questions, or would we wanna move the questions to staff?
I think we can just ask anybody we want.
Yeah, just generally, yeah.
Or there's just a.
'Cause he may wanna chime in on some other districts, how it's done, but to me, if I'm coming into an area going to develop, the EIR's done is a huge issue, because you've already gone through the lawsuits, you've already gone through the costs and the time, which kills deals. Number two, most important, would be the infrastructure. If I can build and there's a sewer line sitting right at my door, I'll come build. You know, it's a couple million every, a couple hundred feet or something for that stuff? So is, has, has it been discussed at all on a city level of investment in something like that through other city funds to make that investment, to install the infrastructure or some of it as a carrot?
It, we, we've had initial discussions internally with staff. We've, we're exploring different.
We've, we're exploring different types of financing mechanisms. One being, you know, in enhanced infrastructure financing districts as well. We've actually are talking to consultants that are assisting us to, you know, help us out, to understand those and the benefits of those, and how we implement some of those financing tools that are available. So, this is going to be a, a partnership effort. Obviously, we understand that the city has to assist and, and, and help with, we have to think out of the box, right? This is just not happening, that is gonna, this is not something that's just gonna happen by itself, right? So, there has to be different things that we do, and we partner with developers, property owners, and, and, and find a way to make it happen. I do wanna make a couple comments, or responses to some of the comments. I, I, I understand there's a, a little bit of concerns with the density, maybe the massing, maybe the height, the number of stories, right? Again, we're, we're showing pictures to give an idea as to what could be in, in portions of the specific plan, right? Not entire specific plan is gonna be an eight to ten story building, right? So, I just wanna make sure that's clear, right? So, we do wanna give that flexibility, because if, when you go to that height, obviously, the expenses, and, and I think everybody understands a little bit of that, it, it's extremely high, right? So, we, we, we see it, we're, we're, we're gonna have a gradual development plan in terms of, you know, the offices coming in, most likely we'll start maybe four, four, three, four stories, right? And then maybe we move on to maybe five, six stories. And, and there will be probably a case where we're gonna have, you know, an eight, an eight story building, right? We, we really don't know. But the one thing we don't wanna do is, is provide restrictions that would give developers the ability to do something that we wanna see, because the, the, this is, this is what we want, right? We want the, the dense employment centers, we want the higher residential stories as well. It's not gonna happen throughout. So, I understand that there's some concerns, and, and I think staff would probably have the similar concerns if we plastered the entire S P with that amount of, of, of buildings, right? So, we do wanna provide some flexibility. We do wanna also make sure that we have safeguards in the plan that help us not only, some of your comments, where we don't wanna see the residential coming first. So, there's different things that we still have to explore. Obviously, this is just to give us the go-ahead to start going to the next step, which is getting the market analysis completed, you know, making sure that the infrastructure is analyzed, that the service is analyzed, and what, what does that mean? And, and maybe once we do a full analysis of what the services are needed, maybe that comes back and says, guess what, nothing can be higher than seven stories, right? And, and then that gets tweaked and that gets implemented into the plan. But I, I think we need to be careful in, in regards to what limitations we put in. And we need to make sure we have, as Jeff indicated, this is a bold plan, right? And, and it's not gonna happen overnight. And it's, I, I, I completely understand that if you do the math, I mean, it could be a forty-year plan, and, and, but, and again, it, it may, it may take a different direction, and it may be done sooner with some variation of what we think it may be right now.
Commissioner Holler, I, I agree, those are good comments. I agree with the desire to maintain flexibility. But flexibility, when you're talking about build-out numbers, influence costs. So, all of that, all of those infrastruc, all the infrastructure that's required to support that level of development, and I see your public works director somewhere in the back of the room there, here we are. That ultimately shows up in, in dominant impact fees, right? Because you gotta, you gotta pay for that somehow. So, I, we, it's just a balance, right? I get that, your comments are really valid. I, I probably have spoken too much about the implementation concerns.
Well, no, you answered a question that was just in my head, is, so we go forward with design, and maybe they don't build ten stories, well, who cares? Well, like you talk about, the infrastructure coming down the street is gonna be based on potential build-outs. So, do we need a six-foot, ten-foot, twenty-foot sewer line? I mean, it all depends on what we're planning, so that does make a difference.
Commissioner Holler, you were talking about a hundred thousand, about four million square feet of office space with an absorption of a hundred thousand in your example. I'm looking at something right now. L.A. County reported eleven, eleven consecutive quarters of negative net absorption with a vacancy rate of twenty-four point five percent. Orange County is at fourteen percent, I'm sorry, San Diego County's at fourteen percent. Orange County's at fifteen percent. And it's basically twenty percent negative, or vacancy rate in Southern California, if you were to combine them all. So, your forty years is gonna turn into a hundred and twenty years. Hypothetically, the numbers are there.
Commissioner, and I, I would like to make a comment about that, and because we're, we're fully aware of, of those numbers in other regions, for sure. What we're also aware is that we have, right now, we have businesses that are paying retail rates to open up an office, because we have zero vacancy, right? So, I think those numbers are accurate. In other areas of Southern California, I, I think we're, we're in a different region. And I think, obviously, when we talk about the four million, I don't think we're talking about four million of just office space only, right? We're talking, it's a different square footage of different things. So, I think we're, we're not truly comparing apples to apples, right? But the, I, I understand that there's, there's, there's a concern that this number could be high, right? And, and again, this is something that has to be vetted, and, and it has to, has to be analyzed to make sure that we have the right balance, right? And I think your concerns are valid, and those will be definitely, you know, brought forward and shared with council. And, and again, this is not something that it's already set in stone in terms of, this is what eventually it's gonna happen, or eventually what's gonna get built. Because again, it, you know, it could, it could take a different direction. But we gotta make sure we go through the studies, we analyze everything. And your comments, again, those will be shared with council, and between your comments and council's comments, you know, this, this could be slightly modified.
Orlando, I know you're not gonna be able to come up with the exact numbers. Liberty, Freedom, and Menifee Business Parks. Those are all this, that, that's exactly the business park, office space. How many square feet is that?
I, obviously, I don't have the total square footage, but it's not true office space, it's, it's...
It can be, though.
Yeah, but it's been designed a little bit different. It's been designed more for potentially having those, those small businesses, such as maybe your, your cabinet manufacturer, right? That wants to have an office and a sales...
Retail.
Retail component in front, and then, you know, the manufacturer on the back, right? Because you're looking at, you know, ten to twenty thousand square foot buildings, right? Can that be an office? Absolutely it can be, but I think, I think the, the intent is for something slightly different.
I think it'd be wiser to wait and see the market for those three business parks that are currently in development, before we jump into a plan with four million square feet that we don't even know if there's a desire for.
I think they do know that there's a desire for it. I think planning does this every day, and knows what will, what the builder want, the developer wants. I appreciate your numbers, though, Michael, but I appreciate that you're going for the moon here, rather than some what-if anybody can do. You're trying to move us into grand, grand dose here, I really appreciate that. But we're not there yet. I mean, Nick's gonna have his hands full. I mean, I don't know how much money the city's gonna put into capital improvements on the sanctuary structure. I don't know, it, it's, it's a lofty goal. But we're just, we're, we're on, what, first base right now? So, but yeah, you're, you're right, Michael, but that's not our business. If the market is cyclical, and...
But if we hinder development, if we go and we change, like, what we can build in the Southern Gateway for something that might possibly be here in thirty years, then we're concerned about sales tax revenue and high-paying jobs.
And that's what we're gonna do.
Those businesses can be coming in tomorrow. But if we change the development code, we're out, and we're gonna wait three decades for development.
I think we're gonna work on that plan that'll bring those, those development in tomorrow.
Commissioner, and I think it's, I, I think it's a little bit of the opposite here, right? I think if, if we let the Southern Gateway develop its current zone, then we may not get exactly what we want, right? The high-paying jobs that we're looking for, right? So, we are trying to put something in place that will give us the ability to attract exactly the businesses, the offices that we want, with the architecture that we want as well, right? So, if we do nothing, we do risk losing an opportunity to build something special.
I'll, I'll balance the two of you by saying, if we don't do something a little lofty, we will end up with what's going on in the E D C North Gate. You guys all saw me screaming about the warehouses. And against my desire on that, we're gonna leave some of that up there. But we're gonna end up with what we don't want up there. If we don't change in the Southern Gateway, we're gonna end up with the same crap we got up there. Now, what's different about the Southern Gateway is we are right next to Loma Linda Hospital, and all the medical that's going in, and the different, the cost goes away, and those are all anchors that are gonna bring a lot of stuff. That proximity, and the, and the freeway proximity, gives us a different quality that we can develop there. So, that's why I'm for that. You're exactly right, as far as if this was the E D C North Gate. But I'm willing to hold out a little bit. I, and I agree with Ivan as far as, I think we might need to bring the stories down, only, only because if it's gonna require infrastructure that is infeasible, then we will be sitting there landbaking for fifty years.
Let me ask you this. A lot of the, am I on, a lot of the development has now been halted in the Northern Gateway. You were at the joint meeting last December. You heard from council members and planning commissioners that residential is not a high priority in that area. It was supposed to go to work. This is a work zone. Also, no entertainment. Ben and Dean said if there's a bar next to it, adult entertainment, but not that kind of adult entertainment. But what I got out of you guys that evening was, you guys were not really for the residential. If we have a need for residential and multi-use residential, why not infill it in the Northern Gateway where actually all the jobs are? I mean, they're entry-level jobs, but there are some high-paying jobs in that area. And rather than be sporadic...
I, I guess, because I, I haven't paid attention to what the residential component is on the gateway, but I could care less if I see another house up there. To me, that's a light industrial manufacturing hub, is what that should be, not housing, to me. Because that's how it's developing out. I could see housing in the Southern Gateway, not in the E D C North Gateway. So, yeah.
Jeff, I have a question for you. As it's currently designed, how would that attract the businesses that we're seeking, the corporations that we're seeking? I know that you, you had worked on the Google campus, if I'm not mistaken. What were the elements that attracted Google to that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, for, for twelve years, I, I was Google's lead urban planner. And so, that's what I was doing, was transforming our campuses in Mountain View and Sunnyvale from office warehouses, which we just bought up and put office into, into complete communities, more like this. So, really, the, the attraction, and not just for Google and the tech companies, but if you go to the Global Institute on Innovation Districts, G I I D, it's a really great website. They've got all kinds of information around the world of all the innovation districts that they are a part of their system. And really, what those employers are looking for is the adjacency to amenities, amenity-rich environments, a balance of the residential, and then the ability to have the small companies in those incubators and startups that they can either buy later, once they come up with a good idea, you know, that happens quite often, or it's the sharing of ideas back and forth. And so, you know, Commissioner Thomas is exactly right. With Loma Linda and Kaiser, and, and the rest of the corridor right here, those are some of your established anchors that could be looking for some of those companies to come closer here. Commissioner Holler, I, I, I don't expect the CEOs from, to, to move out of La Jolla to move into Menifee. That's, that's not the goal. The, the, the goal is that, is to kind of stop or change the trend that ninety percent of Menifee's workforce works outside of the city. That, that is uneconomically feasible for the long-term future. It took me two and a half hours to come up here from San Diego today, and I don't think everybody was going on vacation, right? Those are, those are people that work down there that are driving back the same time I was trying to drive here. So, you know, there is a, I, I think when we look at this problem and, and really try to put some issues forward, it, it's finding that, that right balance of uses. And I agree, I mean, it is a big, bold step. I will say it again, there is no doubt about that. There are challenges ahead of this, but I think there's challenges ahead of the, the workforce and the rest of Menifee, no matter what.
You know, and I, I agree. So, jobs-housing balance is, is, you know, more of that is where we want. It takes a long time, even, and, and we all know that. Even the residential that's here, there's no requirement for someone to live and work in the same, in the same area. So, I, I don't disagree with any of that. I think you, you've heard my concerns, I won't reiterate them. But it is, it is a balance, right? Because reaching for the moon has consequences in other areas. And so, I think, I think that's the thing that I would like to, if you wanna take one thing from my comments, it would be, hey, let's go back and make sure that, that this is the right balance, that we haven't gone so far that it creates negative ramifications in other areas. And I have been complimentary of the concept.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm not trying to say, hey, I don't like the plan. I'm just saying, I'm not quite sure it's ready for prime time yet. I'd like to see, go back and evaluate that a little bit more. And I hope that clarifies my comments, if I've come across as being overly negative, that wasn't my intent.
That's why we're here.
But, but it is to point out things that I see that I think could be problems, so.
So, so, kind of on that, what we're hinting at is, the ten-story is probably not gonna work in the end. But did you do the ten-story because you just wanted to throw out an opportunity? Or does it pencil in as far as you want, you needed the square footage to make it work?
No, it's, it's a future opportunity, to be honest with you.
Oh, okay, so, so if we...
I would fully expect the first projects to come in to be four and six stories, because that's what pencils for standard development today. Once you go above six stories, you change to, from framing to concrete, and you pretty much have to go to ten stories to make it worth your while to pencil out. So, that's why the ten-stories existed. But I fully expect, it's not a requirement, right? I fully expect the first projects to come in at four to six stories and try to see if it happens, because they're gonna, and hopefully, they are incentivized by things, by the carrots from the city.
My initial thought would be to pull out the ten-story, only because it will drive infrastructure financing and public safety needs that will kill the deal. Does that make sense?
It does, totally.
So, that would be my, my thought on that. Because you, and then later, you can amend it if, you know, but if, if, if it's gonna prevent, if that fact is gonna prevent development in the future because of the infrastructure needs, then I would pull that out personally.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you on that, and for sure. I think there's ways to go about that, but it's not my area of expertise. But yeah, we, that is certainly something that we need to look at in the future. I don't think we wanted to, I think we were trying to think big and, and put out a big, bold number, and not, not limit ourselves to what is easy today, basically.
Yeah, we don't want a bunch of what's gone in there so far, right? You want something much nicer than that, and I would support that.
Commissioner Thomas, let, part of the reason that we, we have to analyze the worst-case scenario, right? So, when we start the environmental process, and we do, you know, you know, impacts to aesthetics, and if, if we're contemplating ten-story buildings, that's a specific impact that we need to analyze, right? So, if, if, if we don't do that, then, then we, we don't have a, a valid environmental document, right? So... So, we need to, we need to, even if ten-stories don't happen, which we don't think that probably not gonna happen for a long time, or maybe it may not even happen, but if we don't analyze it, make it part of the project, then we don't have the opportunity or the ability to do it.
But what happens, and I understand what you're saying. If there were no cost to it, I'd say, throw it out there, who cares? It doesn't cost anything. But when the first guy comes in, or to build, say they're down on, halfway down Ziders, I mean, Han to Ziders, and they wanna put in a four-story medical building. Because we have E I R'd it for ten-story potentially, the size of his sewer, water lines and everything are gonna be oversized, and it's gonna kill the deal. That's my concern. How, can you do an E I R with a full potential build-out, so you cover every potential possibility, yet not force him to build an infrastructure? Because the first guy in is what, that's, you gotta have some bucks. So, how, can you still downsize the infrastructure and not kill the deal? If he's only doing a four-story, yet he has to build infrastructure for a ten-story? Because he's the first guy in at the end of the road.
You know, obviously, that's some studies that we need to complete and figure out and kind of do the numbers, right? So, obviously, we're early, early in the process, and we don't have all the answers right now. But to your point, I think these are valid concerns, valid questions that obviously we will look into and make sure that, one, if we do provide for that height, that we have the ability to service it. And if we don't, then obviously, then we make the proper adjustments.
Yeah, if you could do workarounds, I'm all for it. I'm all for it. We just need to have some kind of a explanation of how it would work, right? Because we already have that issue down there, right? It's kind of expensive to come in down there, so, just a thought. But I do prefer something that is old and different than what we have to tag along with what's going on with Loma Linda Hospital. I think there's a great potential there, so.
I have something to add. The, like, for example, Torrey Pines, are those buildings LEED certified? And did that entice companies to come in? The LEED certification, did that, was that an incentive for them?
I would imagine they are. I don't know that for sure, but I imagine they are, because most of the U C system, anything new they build is almost guaranteed to be LEED certified at some level. Plus, you've got Cal Green and a whole host of other systems out there that the city would require to be a part of. Whether that's an enticement or not, or an incentive, probably, but not to a great deal. I think most people that are building the office space that we're envisioning, or the maker spaces or anything else, are creative enough to get, I mean, LEED is, LEED's a great system, but LEED's kind of a lower level at this point compared to a lot of different systems that are out there, the rating systems, so. But, yeah, I mean, it's a, you know, to think about and as a selling point that you've got a LEED neighborhood development is a great selling point, because it means you have reached that balance of uses and other things, and open spaces, and your stormwater, and your infrastructure, and, you know, your forward thinking. And so, you do attract a quality of tenant and a quality of developer that you're looking for.
Orlando, at one point, or can you explain how we went from $299 to $375?
Of what?
What's acres?
Acres?
Yeah, the original, the original area there, EDC, was $299.
I think, you know, it's part of the different workshops and different discussions between staff and the consultant. Obviously, we identified the need to provide the supporting residential, which is critical. And I'll let Jeff maybe expand as to why residential, it's a critical component to make this a viable district, right? And instead of reducing the office, the tech and the retail, the restaurants within the district, we opted to expand it so we have more of that instead of taking away from it. But obviously, we understand the residential is a key component, and we needed some of the density to be part of it. And that's why the original plan got expanded.
Anything else?
No, I mean, residential is kind of an exotery use in the economic development corridor. It's not supposed to be the primary use. So, I think that's what Orlando's getting at, is that as we incorporated that R2 zone out to the west, it allowed for more of that residential to balance it out. My personal preference is to always have your residential a good eight hundred feet from the highway, from a health-safety perspective. And, you know, so we gotta push it a little bit further. But it's, I mean, another valid point, yeah.
I gotta let you guys know, I have a problem with downzoning five-acre properties to eighty dwelling units an acre. What is that, four hundred, four hundred units on an existing property? I don't see the community going for that. And I don't see the council going for that. That's a, that's a huge, huge concern of mine. Because we're running out of acreage. And one of the, one of the things you hear all the time is, you know, we're losing our rural identity. Oh, God, I said a lot of words. But I think, given the choice of keeping a five-acre property, an area of five-acre properties, and bulldozing them to put eighty unit, an acre, I just don't think that's the right move.
I'd like to respond to that. Looking to the future, Menifee, I don't wanna say lost, we lost our identity a long time ago, but since I moved here, I think we've tripled our population. We're bringing in a new generation of college graduates. And the people that were local homeowners here are the ones that have those five acres now. So, I mean, what I'm trying to say is we're growing and things are gonna be changing. And it's our job to see the new vision for Menifee. And like Commissioner Thomas did about the warehouse, like Commissioner Haller said, and Tammy, I think we're, this is a great opportunity for us. This, I haven't been in many planning commission meetings, if any, that had a true vision like this. And I think with the minds that we had and what we, and all, everybody contributing, like what we've heard tonight, it'll evolve. It'll evolve to what it should be, and we can do it if we stay on it. And I know a lot of the questions that were addressed to staff are, have been taken into consideration, I'm sure. And you're not, I mean, do you wanna do the easy thing? You wanna take on the same old? Then, I mean, I'm not saying that same old's bad, but I think.
Yeah, but I'm looking at it.
I think we're changing.
Jobs and, and sales tax revenue.
Yeah.
This idea is great for forty years from now, but it doesn't solve any problems today. And you're talking about all these high school graduates going to college. They're not going to college anymore. Gen Z.
Well, the jobs we wanna bring in are the jobs we wanna bring in.
The jobs that are bringing in, that we wanna bring in.
The white collar jobs.
Are gonna be replaced by A I in the next ten years.
Well, that's, that's what we're doing right now. We're here to figure that out.
But the jobs that are coming in now?
No, I agree with that.
They're looking at blue-collar work because of the stability, the wages, they're high wages.
And that's the input we need to apply to this, this vision, this great, big, beautiful, specific plan, right? So.
I think we're premature.
So, what, what they see right now, it looked like it'd be a no vote right now, the way it is, for planning commission, right? But we're not at that point. That's not what we're doing right now.
And let me make a couple of comments, obviously, and as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, today, we're not approving anything, right? We're a year away before we come back with a document that truly shows everything that you've been asking today, okay? Is there gonna be ten stories, maybe changes? You know, what do the services look like? What does everything look like, right? And obviously, there's been a lot of great input. I think some of your questions and concerns, obviously, we're gonna take those with us. And if, and again, if we, if we get the thumbs up to continue moving forward, once we take this to council, then all of your feedback, all of your comments we'll be looking to, will be addressed and will be made part of the document, right? So, once we come back, and if commission and council aren't comfortable with what we came back, then at that point, you know, the commissioner has, you know, the ability to decide one way or the other, and so does the council.
Orlando, I get where you're coming from, but let me ask you a question. Do you plan on changing the development code? And saying, hey, this can't be in there, because we won't have an innovation zone someday? I mean, if a project came to us next week, or five weeks from now, six weeks from now, of a guy who wants to open a motorcycle shop and sell motorcycles and maintenance repair on them, are we gonna say no? Because if we already had a specific plan in place, so actually, maybe it's more logical for two years down the line.
Can you do a zone change?
Can we say no? Or do we have to say no to that motorcycle shop?
Once the specific plan is in place and we have an adopted ordinance that tells people what the requirements and what the allow uses are, then, then, yeah, we, they would have to follow what's in place.
So, we'd have to deny the project?
No.
They wouldn't be allowed to submit a project if it's not, unless they wanna submit a project.
Yeah, but it's permitted use today.
Concurrently with a code amendment.
So, we're gonna leave a piece of land vacant potentially, until it gets absorbed by other properties?
Just as, because this is a living document right now, right? This is a work in progress, a draft, if you will, that will have multiple iterations and may come back to you multiple times before there is even a true document for you to adopt. If the conversation, and I'll leave it up to the experts and staff to decide, but if the conversation is, you want certain types of projects to be able to exist there that would fit into the vision in the long term, you can do that. You can make those recommendations. And as the project, you know, as the specific plan gets approved, maybe a motorcycle shop would fit into the vision. That's your policy prerogative of whatever it is that you want. And then, as projects, even with a specific plan, you know, there are potentially opportunities in the future. There's certain parts of it that might get amended, or a specific plan might get amended, even, you know, five or ten years from now. Not saying that's necessarily what we want, because we want to go forward with the specific plan vision. But as you know, with changes in state law and, and, you know, needs of the economy, and as the city grows, things can evolve. And it will be up to the policymakers at that time to make the determination at that time. I think the conversation here is to give you a chance to give input into what our professionals have looked at and said, hey, maybe this is, in working with economic development and our experts in planning say, this is where we see the city of Menifee going, given that it's grown so much in the last ten years. This is where the economy's going, and we want to plan for that eventuality. But it's not set in stone. And so, well, I'm sure we'll come back multiple times for you to give more input, because the next iteration of this might not, may or may not have the ten stories. That'll be up to you. And then, maybe, you know, a few months from now, suddenly, the price of steel is very cheap, and ten stories is what we want, right? That's, that's up to you. But I just wanted to remind you that the goal, I think, is not to leave anything empty for, you know, a ten-year period, or to keep just dirt. The goal is to encourage development, but development in a way that fits the vision of the city and where we're gonna go. Because what you'll see with older cities, I believe, is if you let some of these lower revenue-generating uses that may not have the long-term vision of cities, then you end up stuck with some of those businesses that might not fit into what the city, where the city's going in ten or twenty years.
Sure. And may I add too? You know, I mean, there's gonna be a range of uses that are gonna come forward with this plan. And we do want it to have enough flexibility to allow for a variety of things. And I think primarily, though, we wanna promote and support and make it by right for the, for the types of uses that are gonna be, that are gonna achieve the vision. And maybe other uses that aren't so much in line with the vision. You know, maybe not prohibiting them outright, but perhaps their conditional use permit or that kind of thing that, you know, we're steering, at least the plan will steer the uses to achieving the vision.
So, I'm not as concerned about the individual uses. I mean, you'll come back with a matrix at some point in time, or, you know, down the road. But I do have this question. I'm hoping that we would get to see this, not a year from now, when you're ready to, you know, publish an N O P. I'm hoping that we'll get to see a couple of iterations of this that reflect our comments and whatever comments come from the council before you get to the N O P.
That's correct. There'll be, there'll be multiple opportunities to provide input. And even once a document is in a draft form, it'll come back to you to tweak it even some more. And even until the last day, probably tweaks will happen, so.
And going back to, sorry, I just picked motorcycle, just as an argument there. If some dude wants to build that right now on a, on a two-acre property, right next to Caliber, actually, I wanna make sure it's left in the development code to allow him to do that, because we're looking down the line twenty, thirty years. There's no reason for him not to have a business, pay employees good wages, have sales tax revenue for the city for the next ten, fifteen years, until some developer decides to assemble both those properties and build one of those intel campuses. So, while I can accept this being a future item, I don't wanna hamper, I don't wanna hamper current development. Because I think if we hamper current development, yeah, it's gonna be a loss for the city. Like, for example, where I buy my electrical supplies in my, in my day-to-day business, I purchase them in Temecula. They have a one-acre lot. They do fifteen million dollars in sales a year. Every employee in there makes six figures, except for the, one of the runner guys. That's a, that's a hell of a business, six, seven guys. But it's not tech, it's not innovation. But for someone to sit there and occupy a space for fifteen years, that's, that can't be a loss for the city. So, I don't want us to be so clouded with an innovation district. And we're not looking at all the pieces that can happen in the meantime.
Right, right. Thank you, Michael.
Yep.
Commissioners, have any more questions for staff? Okay.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanna, well, I just, I don't know if it's a question. But, I don't know. For me, I would really like to see performance-based, phasing-type of job creation. If we're gonna go dense, I would like to see like a V M T mitigation fund for alternative modes of transportation. And then to consider real design standards or from base zoning.
Thank you, Tammy. If there are any further questions, Madam Clerk, was there any correspondence received on this item? And are there any requests to speak?
Yes, to both. Our community development director has asked me to share one of the letters included in your folders. But before I do that, I'm gonna invite Mr. Klein up to the podium, because he would like to make a public comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Great questions. Good job, Orlando consultant. I'm gonna try and address some of the things that you guys answered or asked. And based on my history here. and, and based on my history here at the city, prior to incorporation, and, and my longtime history in Murrieta, to use as examples, so I hope I can get through this list in the limited time. My biggest concern, as, as Ivan mentioned, is, is the land banking, and what it ends up becoming, in my opinion, is a quasi-moratorium. And you've got landowners down here, and, and, you know, one of the great things of America is, you know, landowners' rights. Something else I think is an important distinction is, with this specific plan, you know, is distinguishing goals versus a wish list. Uh, and, and I'm not, I'm not sure that, that these are all goal-driven. And in that, are all these things achievable? And going back in history, I know, Chris, you were here during the EDC, but I, I don't know who else was here when we went through this with the EDC. But much of the discussion on both sides is exactly what we went through with the EDC. And a few years ago, the consultant came, and I think it was a 10-year review of the EDC, and one of the questions they asked the council at the time is, what have you achieved of the EDC goal, of, of, of those goals? And so I ask you, what's been achieved? The land is raw. And time and time again, we've heard developers come forward to council, and, and previous council members, and, and some current have said, well, we, we want to save it. And Bob Carwin asked, at one time, what are we saving? When it comes, what is it? And there's no answer for that. Loma Linda's five stories, and I can tell you that the city of Murrieta became less restrictive to get Loma, Loma Linda in. And I can elaborate on that, but I don't want to burn my time unless one of you want to ask a question. Land is cheaper for parking lots than a parking structure. You see parking structures near the beach because the land is more expensive than building the parking structure. The ORP in Murrieta mainly is south of Carmax, along Monroe, and the city of Murrieta took $3 million of their ARPA money to put in the water line along Madison to try and spur the growth down there. However, much of that makeup is very similar to the Southern Gateway. Many lots, many small lots, many owners. That's a constraint. So is your goal achievable? Lastly, because I'm almost out of time, with the residential component, and Ty can probably talk to this, Orlando, but be very careful. Historically, and, and you mentioned it, right? No residential before commercial. Well, with HCD and all of the, the affordable housing and the no-net loss, so if you zone some of this land residential, and in 10, 15, 20, 30 years, the city says, our vision has changed, you're gonna have to find a place for that residential to relocate it someplace else. If I can just, a little bit more, Randy? I, I've testified before more about retail. Somebody mentioned the triangle. You know, for years, Murrieta, so Murrieta turned 34 on July 1st, and the triangle still sits vacant, because council said, we're gonna hold out. Dominogony family came many times with different visions, and the council, for the council side, said, we're gonna hold out. And the market is not limited to Murrieta. And so the market went to Temecula. So the point I'm trying to make in the comparisons with EDC and what Murrieta did, um, where they became less restrictive, because we had a four-story limit. And we had, I think it was 15% landscape, we had a setback in parking. And I can remember, I had a project in Temecula, a gentleman that wanted to build a hotel, and he told me, this was right after I got off Planning Commission, he told me, your development code is too restrictive with all of those components. I can't get a big enough FAR and get enough keys to build a hotel. And I went to Randon Lane and Doug McAllister, who were on the council at the time, and they revised the development code, and that's how we got Loma Linda, and that's how we got the rest of the hotels. We had one hotel at the time. So I'm not, I'm not saying to you to not go into a specific plan, right? Not saying be less restrictive, but what I heard some of you say tonight is, you know, can it be built, and are we tying the hands? So it comes back to, what is achievable and how do you get that? It's finding that balance. So just be concerned, be, be careful with the unintended consequences of what we're looking at. And this is as much for staff moving forward, and I'm sure that I'll participate in some of the, uh, some of the discussions, uh, but I just wanted to share those now, based on some of the comments that I heard you guys making tonight, which is great. This is great discussion, so thank you. Thanks for the extra time.
Thank you for your wisdom. Appreciate it.
Okay, if there are no other requests to speak, then I'll go ahead and read this comment.
Madam Clerk, before you do, just, uh, you have two comments that are in your blue folder that were received today. One of the comments that we're gonna read, uh, he was actually, uh, had another meeting in a different city and was hoping to be done, to be here and, and talk to the commission, but he said, if I don't make it on time, I would like for my comment to be read as part of the record. And that's why we're doing that one and the other one, so, um, just so you know.
So this is from Coca Lockschmidt, a property owner from the area. "My business partners and I are landowners within the city of Menifee's economic development corridor along the 215. We have been inspired to further invest in Menifee due to the city's incredible vision and community engagement around the Menifee Innovation District. This is a planning effort that makes Menifee unique in the inland empire and sets the city apart and above others in preparing for the future. We are especially encouraged by the commitment to creating a vibrant, forward-thinking environment that integrates places to work, live, and play. The Innovation District will attract high-quality businesses, employment opportunities, and amenities that benefit the entire community. We look forward to utilizing the city's bold vision for this specific plan and applying its principles to the land we own and intend to develop. This is an inflection point in the history of the city of Menifee that we will look back on one day with immense pride for the leadership that the city's staff and consultant team led with the community and the Planning Commission supported. It's sometimes difficult to envision the future, and yet visionary cities can attract, attract investment. If you don't shoot for the moon, you will miss every shot you don't take, and even if you miss, you may land among the stars. Menifee's future is bright. Menifee has land, water, power, leadership, talent, and now a renewed forward planning vision that is influencing and inspiring the development community to value our opportunities and partnerships with the city in ways that could be transformative from an economic development and investment perspective. We commend the city of Menifee for pursuing ambitious and visionary planning and strongly encourage the Planning Commission to support this transformative effort. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As, as was stated earlier by our Assistant, um, City, uh, Attorney, this is a receive and file item.
Randy, before you proceed, I, I do have a couple of comments I would like to, uh...
Well, I'll finish, let me finish this statement. So this is a receive and file item, and no action is required. Michael.
Thank you. I just have a couple of recommendations for council and/or staff, or Jeff. Currently in our development code, section 9.140 dot 030, allowed uses tabled, or on the allowed uses table, it lists gas stations. Currently, they may not be located south of Scott Road. That is black and white. I see the reasoning of this when the EDC was developed 12 years ago. But with the Keller interchange, um, we gotta allow gas stations there. There's no reason for Murrieta to build a gas station, but we not build a gas station also. That's a high, high sales tax revenue. So we need to keep that in mind to possibly, uh, change the development code. I don't know if that'll change with the specific plan, but we need to look into that.
Sure. That's why we're here.
Also, along Keller Road, uh, we need to make this retail. Uh, hotel, restaurants, gas stations, like I just mentioned, high sales tax. Um, we'd be foolish to put a six-story building right there when we can have sales tax generations. Um, that building might be a maker space, no sales tax at all. We have an interstate interchange there. We need to capitalize on that. Um, we'll also capitalize on the Murrieta Hills specific plan. Those residents will be coming to our city, um, mainly on the way home from work, um, and spending their money in our town. This will help rebalance what the Menifee residents are spending in Murrieta at the Heritage Marketplace in Annalup Square. And finally, uh, we need a constraint map. It must be presented, uh, prior to moving. I mean, we got another couple of steps, but that constraint map must be created. Um, that includes roadway, setbacks, easements, drainage, cows, the Caltrans property, uh, blue line streams, required landscaping, required parking, um, along with max building coverage, um, so we can get a more realistic view of what fits. And, uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So it sounds like you have something to say, Jeff?
No, I mean, I, I, I can't get behind gas stations down there, but we do have a hotel and retail and, and the rest of it down there, precisely because of what you were just talking about. And to your point about, um, your e-bike, uh, e-bikes, e-bike manufacturers and design fit great into maker spaces. We had one on our Google campus, and so I, I agree with you. They fit within certain parameters of, of what we're talking about. So, uh, you know, I, I think there's, it's a push and pull on a lot of different factors here. But I, you know, I can't, I can't argue with everything you're saying. I think, I agree with you.
Can I ask you an overarching question on this? It, in my mind, it's much easier to design one of these innovation districts in a San Francisco, San Jose, downtown Riverside, those kind of places.
Good point.
We are midstream between Riverside and San Diego. We were kind of, and I, I don't think we'll ever be a huge downtown like that. So how do you, realistic do you see this development here? Just comment to, I'm not saying it's not gonna happen, but comment to your, have you had any experience putting something like this in a non-downtown or urban area?
Sure, they, they exist, and, and what, what Menifee is lacking is that employment opportunity right now. And while it may fit, a, an innovation district may fit in Mountain View or Sunnyvale or, or so forth, it took me 10 years to get the Google plan approved through the city of Mountain View. It's not easy. Change is hard. We asked for a lot, we pushed, we pushed height, we pushed density.
So Mountain View, just to, to tag on that, I used to work in that area. That was, was it not in the past, it was kind of the suburbs of San Jose at that time? Or was it, was it closer in?
Yeah, the Bay Area operates in a strange way, where there's no there, there, there's no center to Silicon Valley. Everybody commutes every direction, every day. But we were on the, the bay side of the 101. So it felt like an industrial park.
Okay.
And the comments we got from commission and council often, for years, was, why would anybody live out there? Why would you put residential out there? And it was because we had 20,000, you know, employees that wanted to live out there. And, um, and there's a huge housing shortage, obviously, in the Bay Area.
See, to me, that's a completely different dynamic than Menifee.
Totally, 100%.
So that's why, I, I hope something like this will work, because we want it, but the question is, will it?
Yeah, I, I...
That's the overarching question in my mind.
No, I mean, the, the, the questions asked by, by the last speaker were, were really point-on, and, and I, there's a lot of credit there. But you are a city that is growing, that is, in my opinion, uneconomically viable for the long-term future, because your infrastructure's gonna continue to cost more as you develop purely residential like you have over the last 15 years. And so...
Let me pepper my comment in what you said. I'm still for the district, I am still for it. I just wanted to get a realistic view, because if we don't, we're gonna end up with what the market wants to sell us now, which is garbage. Well, we know who's approached us and what they want to do down there. And that's not what I want down there, i.e. warehouses and things like that.
Keep doing what we're doing, we'll keep getting what we got. All right.
Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, Chairman Madrid, just, just for the record, this was not a receive and file, obviously. This was, uh, an item to, uh, conduct a workshop, you know, to review and discuss the land use plan, which we've done, and for us to, uh, get some of your comments, which we will, uh, move forward and take to city council.
Thank you, Director. I just want to thank all the commissioners' wisdom and, and really caring about this city and what the future of the city's gonna look like, and this has been a great start to getting there. Okay, so proudly ask the Community Development Director, do you have any updates or comments?
I do have one comment, um, well, two comments. Number one, uh, you know, thank the commission, obviously. Uh, this is a, uh, an item that's obviously important for the city, and I know you, everyone here is very passionate about Menifee and wants nothing but the best of Menifee, so every comment you've done, you know, we don't take it the wrong way, we, we, we take it because you care, and, and you want the right thing, and you want Menifee to, to continue to prosper, so. For that, thank you for the time you invest and all the time you put in, and, and sometimes you give a lot of material, and you're always, you're always willing and, and, and able to, um, provide comments. So thank you for that. The second comment is that I do want to, uh, inform the commission and announce that, uh, today is gonna, is going to be Doug Dornell's last planning commission. At least for Menifee. He's actually retiring, and his last day is going to be tomorrow, and I want to publicly thank Mr. Dornell for, uh, the last six years he's, uh, put in with the city of Menifee. He has been, uh, an excellent employee, and I've counted many times for him to help me out, and he's always, he's always delivered, so, um, I want to wish him nothing but the best. I think, uh, and I know at least one or maybe two of you have retired and have come back and done some things, and, uh, I totally see him probably doing a little bit of that, but, uh, maybe doing it on, on, on his own time, you know, or, or at least putting in whatever time he wants to put in if he does decide to do that. But I wanted to say, thank you, Doug, for everything, and, and we're gonna miss you, and, uh, you've been here many times before the commission, and I'm, I'm sure they're, uh, they're gonna miss you as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Orlando. Appreciate that, the kind words there, and, uh, I'm gonna really miss you too, and, um, a lot of, a lot of people here, and it's been a pleasure working with the, uh, with the commission and the council, and this is a great city. And, um, a lot of exciting things that I've been fortunate enough to be involved in, and more exciting things that, um, I will have to say goodbye to, but, um, it's more great things after I leave, so, thank you all.
Thank you, Doug. Oh, no, how, how's that gonna affect the, uh... How's that gonna affect the Innovative District without you here?
Well, I, I think they'll manage. It'll be, it'll be good.
Thanks for your effort on that, Doug.
And congratulations, Orlando, on your, uh, upgrade.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank God.
A lot of news today. Enjoy your retirement. It's, you're gonna spend probably time with your family, I hope, and...
Absolutely, yeah.
Enjoy, and I'm, I'm glad I got to meet you and work with you.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
We'll miss you, Doug.
Congratulations, Orlando.
Thank you for putting up with all the gyrations on the Planning Commission. I know we are not an easy group, so, uh, it's always fun to watch staff over there and your responses as we're bantering back and forth, because I know a thought, some thoughts, yeah, other ones, what is he thinking? I know you, you've put up with that, so thank you, and, uh, congratulations on attaining retirement.
Thank you.
Now, who's the public gonna yell at now? Darn.
Orlando. Hey, Orlando, uh, do you have any updates on... Hey, Orlando, uh, do you have any updates on Corian?
We've, um, we've completed, uh, we've completed the demo work. I mean, as you can see, um, the building's down, uh, we've, uh, demoed the commercial structure that was there, we took out the foundation, we upgraded the whole site, so, uh, the work has been completed. Um, the contractor's in the process of, um, removing the, the equipment.
What about the fence?
Uh, the, the fence, uh, we're working with a property owner to, um, to figure that out. Uh, it, there, there are some, uh, probably areas that we may wanna protect as well, so we're trying to figure out what, what, what areas we want to, to maintain.
Is the front portion of that, it got, the map got split, right? And so is the front retail gonna move forward or no?
Right now, we're looking at, uh, there's, there's multiple, um, developers looking into it, they're, uh, doing to diligence, but we don't have any formal application.
What about the boulders? What's holding that up? Edison?
They're, uh, they're almost, they're almost done. They, I think they, uh, last time I checked, they were ready to ask for CFOs on some of the apartments. Um, they're, they're finalizing, um, some, some of the things. I don't think there's any, uh, issues with them. I think it's just part of the process they're going through.
Because I'd like to see the, uh, that daycare center open as being our first.
Yep.
So Orlando, did you find out, um, what's going on, um, west of Popeyes on Newport, that curb and gutter that's being installed?
No, I don't, I don't have that information. I was, uh, checking with the CIP and, you know, uh, they were out this last couple days.
Okay. You know what I'm talking about, Michael?
Yeah, I do. Um, in fact, I asked, I asked Nick about that. Um, part of the, uh, conditions of approval for Popeyes...
Oh, okay.
Was a right turn in to that property. Why it's taken over a year for them to build it, because they did the island.
You mean the right turn lane?
Right turn lane into the, into the chicken plot, the park. Um, the island was part of it, along with that right turn lane. They're just now doing the right turn lane.
Makes sense. All right, would the, uh, planning commissioners like to request any future agenda items? Still waiting on that global traffic study, but oh, well, so are you guys, huh?
He's sticking it with him.
That'll be Nick. Okay, so I'll adjourn this meeting at 8:02 PM. Thank you, everyone.